I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 21st, 2014. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the exit gate is open and there is no need for a parking pass to exit. Please note, the planning commission action today is final on item number 1.2, special permit number 08002A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the planning commission to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the planning commission. The planning commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the city council or the county board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 7th, 2015. Is there a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Webber?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Heacham?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jean to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand at that time and state the item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jean, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item 1.1, comprehensive plan conformance, number 14027, to review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. The proposal to declare property as surplus generally located at North 12th Street and Charleston Street. And item 1.2, special permit number 08002A, for authority to expand the area for the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off the premises. The property is generally located at 2500 Northwest 12th Street, and the action on this special permit is final unless appealed to the city council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
I see none.
And is there anyone here wishing to speak on either item 1.1 or 1.2 today?
All right, seeing no one, we will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second. Call the vote, please.
Webber?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Heacham?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion for approval carries eight to zero. Item 1.1, the comprehensive plan conformance is a recommendation to the city council, and the special permit is final unless appealed to the city council.
There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant then will be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and has five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted by the commission. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jean, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, and we have just one today. Item number 4.1 on page 17, change of zone number 14035, from R2 residential district to R3 residential district on property generally located at the northwest corner of South 40th Street and Pioneer's Boulevard. The staff recommendation is approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
I see none. Good afternoon, Kristi Icorn, planning staff. This application is for a change of zone, as Jean mentioned, from R2 residential to R3 residential. The first question you might be asking is, what's the difference between R2 and R3? There really isn't a lot of difference. Generally, R3 can have more density on it than R2, and it has a little bit different setbacks. The R3 zoning district has a front yard setback of 20 feet, where the R2 zoning district has a front yard setback of 25 feet. There is also one exception that is in our code, that it allows for an adjustment of a front yard setback in the R3 zoning district for lots that are on a corner, such as these two existing lots today, which allows them to make adjustments to the front yard when you have two rear yards that abut each other. That provision doesn't exist in the R2 zoning district, but it's a very important provision in terms of flexibility for allowing more buildable area on a property. It would allow you to adjust that front yard setback from 20 feet down to 15 feet, which gives you some additional feet. So why is that important on this site? Well, this site's kind of unique in that it is in a developed area. It is on the corner of two arterial streets. Both Pioneer's and South 40th Street are arterials. Both of them are relatively narrow streets. They're not improved to arterial street sections. This is over an acre, where all of the residential lots around it are obviously smaller than an acre. So taking access to Pioneer's or to South 40th Street could be a challenge when developing this lot. In order, Public Works and Planning have talked with the applicant about limited access onto 40th and onto Pioneer's, and the reason for that is, in the future, there may be improvements needed to this intersection, and those improvements may require having a turn section in South or turn lane in South 40th Street, and it's very dangerous to have driveways that would back into a turn lane. Plus driveways on Pioneer's and on South 40th Street would not meet the access management design standards. So the only access that could be granted to this site would really be off of South 39th Street. With R2 zoning today, somebody could develop this property with a final plat and get about 10 lots. The applicant, as they have represented to the planning department, intends to develop this property also with just 10 lots. They would be getting access from South 30th Street and be using a north-south driveway. I'm going to show you a site plan. It was in the staff report, and I will let the applicant talk a little bit more about this development specifically and the site plan, but this is what they had provided to the planning department when they applied for their change of zone, and this was also the site plan that they showed the neighborhood and the neighborhood association when they had their meeting Thursday night. So access would be off of here on South 39th Street. The whole reason for the change of zone is not to increase density, but it's to provide a larger buildable area overall for the units, so that you could have larger units on these lots. And I can let the applicant talk about the reasons why they might want to have larger units on these lots than what they could get with the R2. I would also note, because the question has come up, that this area is in the neighborhood design standards, which means this area was inside the corporate city limits prior to 1950. So any residential areas that meet that criteria would have to meet neighborhood design standards. And what does that mean for this site? That means that whatever gets developed here at the time of building permit, planning department staff would be looking for at least one door and two windows on each unit in order to meet the neighborhood design standards, and it would be reviewed at the time of building permit. Does anybody have any questions for me at this time? Tracy?
Talking about those neighborhood design standards, would the two windows and the door, does that have to be like on the side facing, say, 40th Street?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. Ed Zimmer is our neighborhood design standards review person, and he reviews that at the time of building permit, and so I couldn't answer that question. I would note that whether the change of zone was approved or not approved, the neighborhood design standards would apply in the same capacity irregardless of the zoning.
Another question for you, Kristi. Can you put the other picture back up for me?
Sure.
Those lots that are to the west, how wide are they?
These ones over here?
Yeah.
They're probably about 50 foot. I couldn't say for certain.
Do you know, I guess I could look and see, how wide are the lots that they're proposing here? 35?
The lots that I see are about 42 feet wide.
What?
No, 40, they're all 40. The townhouse lots are at least 40, because you have to have at least a 40-foot-wide attached single-family lot in the district, and you have to have at least a 50-foot-wide lot in the R3 zoning district, and they meet both of those criteria.
So what's the standard along 37th Street or 39th Street there for those ones that are already developed? Because they, when I look at that and look at this area, I'm like, how are they fitting in 10, because there's only three adjacent across the street?
It would be fitting 10 in based on the site plan, but I'd be happy to let them answer any more specifics about the site plan, because the site plan is not attached to the change of zone. Okay.
Kristi, one quick question, and I know we talked about this earlier. When we look at the difference in setback from this and the rest of the block, we're just talking about five feet, right? It's not a big difference between what the rest of the blocks north of this are seeing.
In almost all residential districts, the front yard setback is 25 feet in almost all of them, except for the R3, which happens to be 20 feet. And I, R3 was a district that was developed that generally happens all over the city, and honestly, I don't know why it was 20 versus 25, but the impact, the visual impact on the street is probably not going to be that much more.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Kristi? All right, hearing none. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Here today representing John Rollis and Bill Meter, who have formed a binary college LLC to do this development. I think Kristi did a very good job briefing you. This is a site that we have been approached by over the last three or four years by several clients, and I think Kristi did a good job explaining to the neighbors that there was lines of people that wanted to do convenience stores or some other commercial uses here, and I think planning did a good job in being pretty steadfast that it was going to remain a residential use. I think assisted living complexes and some Alzheimer's units had also been evaluated. So Bill and John want to develop this as the townhomes, and I'll put the exhibit back up. I think that's really the crux of the goal here. As she mentioned, the minimum lot widths in both R2 and R3 are the same, and there is a, and the size of the lot is the same too. Single-family, 6,000; single-family attached, 5,000 square feet. And so, and when we first went down the road on this project with the planning department, we were considering trying to do a community unit plan and try to get rid of the 20% penalty because we didn't have enough room. Well, that got caught up towards the end of the process in that there's another provision in the code that a CUP in R2 would only permit eight units based on the land area we had. So it's kind of strange that in a CUP, we could only do eight, but if we went in and final platted this today in the existing zoning, we could do 10 units like we're proposing here. So as she mentioned very well, what really changed is the interior, because, okay, the interior setback between the units going to 5 foot from 10 foot, as well as that provision that allows them in R3 to be a little bit closer to the street down here along Pioneer's. And so, and then what we've also warranted to the neighbors and is shown on this site plan is that for these two existing homes to the north, we're going to maintain the R2 10-foot setback to them. And so they're really, in our opinion, unaffected. They're going to have a single-family home next to them. They're going to have a 10-foot setback, or that home's going to have a 10-foot setback. And so, and then I think with the access provisions, again, we could come in today, we could final plat this thing with 10 lots, and we'd have five driveways taking access onto 40th Street, and there was nothing that the city could do about it, you know, and that's probably not the best thing for everybody. So I applaud our client that they're willing to do this driveway here and probably have rear-loaded garages on the units then that take access off of that. It will also then allow Public Works to, if they would desire, to put in a right-hand turn lane on 40th Street, which will help it on the stacking there during the peak periods. And so, and they will get seven foot there. We have a building line district down here, too. They're not going to require a right-way along Pioneer's, but there is a building line district, and so we have our setback from that, too. So it's seven foot, and so our setback from Pioneer's is going to be quite good, I think. And so by gaining, and what we discussed at the neighborhood meeting we had with the neighbors, is that by gaining that five foot, it allows nine out of 10 of these units to go to a 35-foot width versus 29 or 30. And so what you get there is just, it's a lot, that five foot makes a big difference when you're designing the living area and the kitchen and everything else, and I feel like it's, and our client agrees, and I think the neighbors agreed, that it's going to be a better unit. It's going to be a more expensive unit, a more desirable unit, and is going to be built to have a higher value. So I think in terms of what the city would like here, this is a great fit. They're keeping it residential, doing townhomes, and the city ends up, at the end of the day, getting this 1.42 acres, which has sat there for, I think forever. My understanding is this was the homestead for about 200-acre farm that went from 40th Clear to 33rd, and it, town is just, they sold it off and it developed up here, and this 1.42 acres has sat there for decades. And so, but the city will get a huge win with no driveways on 40th and no driveways on Pioneer's. And so I think it's going to be better homes in there this way than if we just straight-platted it. And so that, again, is the crux for the change of zone and what's driving this application today. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mike?
One question.
Mike?
So you said the lots to the north, there was going to be a 10-foot setback?
Correct.
And do you know, according to R3, would it be 10 feet required or less?
No. Our, our, our side yard in R3 could go down to five.
Okay, so you're volunteering to give them?
Correct.
The R2 setback?
Right.
Okay.
And, and we have met with those folks, and they both admitted that for whatever reasons, their houses are probably not 10-foot from their, from the property line on their side, but we're warranting that that's how this final plat will come in. And so we'll work that out with staff when we come in with the final plat that, and I don't know if we figured out how to do that, that, well, obviously, we'll show the 10-foot setback, and then we're warranting that we'll only apply for one curb cut for the entire property.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy?
Mike, can you tell me, on the part of those buildings that's going to be facing Pioneer's, is that going to be considered the front, the back? What's that going to look like as?
That was a question that was asked, and I don't have that answer. Bill and John haven't engaged their architect at this point on how they're going to do things. They know they're going to do rear-loaded garages and how they're going to set up the interior. I know that Kristi said she wasn't sure. My understanding with the neighborhood design standards is it's always meant the side of the house that faces the street must have the two windows and the door. And I was speaking with Bill about it earlier, and he says that's not going to be a problem. So, you know, I think they want to obviously do these as really nice houses. If any of you know John Rollis, this is a deviation from his normal $600,000 homes to doing some townhomes, and so they will be of quality, but I, I think the design standards are going to govern that that side facing the street have those treatments.
So I assume then that the same will be true on 39th Street? That'll be, you know, the front facing?
Right.
So we don't have garages facing, you know, just this blank garage wall facing 40th or 39th?
No, in this case, we can't, because we're not going for curb cuts on all those lots. We'll just have the curb cut at the one-share drive, and then all the garages will have to be rear-loaded. So we're going to try to make that driveway, we have got room in that north-south piece of the alley that will probably make that driveway wider to accommodate some parking along it, too. But each unit will still have a two-stall garage, and we'll be able to get two more cars in front of the closed garage. So that was the other concern some of the neighbors had. For example, on Pioneer's, these houses that face Pioneer's, a lot of those people are coming over on 39th and parking, because they can't park on Pioneer's. And so I think with doing these units, with the two-stall garages, with the alley, and providing some parking back there, it really is going to help on the parking impact on 39th Street.
So basically, this interior?
Alley.
Section?
Yeah.
Is going to be mostly concrete?
Yeah. Well, the building envelopes that are shown on there, the building won't be that long, and so they'll probably move it up to the front yard setback, then have the garage. I think there'll be some green space backyard, but yeah. It's either concrete there or it's concrete in front of every house with the garage, as we, you mentioned.
Other questions? Tracy? I mean Kathy?
(laugh) Okay. Mike, first of all, thanks, and thanks to the applicant for having the meeting with neighbors. As you know, I think that's great, and it's really important. Did Public Works give you any indication? Anybody who's driven through here knows that cars do really stack up on this. Are you guys going to run into any problems down the road if they make a turn lane there on 40th, that they won't let you turn left coming off of 39th onto Pioneer's, so going eastbound? Are you probably still going to be okay with that?
No, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
I think that Pioneer's doesn't have the load of traffic that 40th does, and so I think the left-hand turn lane in Pioneer's to go north has been sufficient for the peak hours. I used to drive that street a lot during that time. And so I think that they have every intention that 39th Street would stay open. I mean, it's full access movement there.
Right.
So I don't think it's going to have any, any impact, and so. And some of the neighbors commented about, you know, why we couldn't dump this driveway here out the other way, and we talked about that reasoning, because there is an existing one there for the existing house, but with everything going on, and if a right-hand turn lane is put in, and if that's our only entrance in on this side, what we're also concerned, and Public Works was concerned about, is one of our owners coming up here and then waiting to turn left, and pretty soon, they're backing up traffic into the intersection of 40th and Pioneer's. So I think the one access point onto 39th is the best for everyone involved, and again, for this piece of land that, and I think the neighbors had some relief that it's just going to be residential.
What it could be versus what it might be, right?
To some degree, you know, and so, yeah. But I think this layout has come with a lot of work with staff and presents the best opportunity for everyone.
Okay. Did the neighbors have any other feedback or concerns that you guys were?
No, they had, they had a little concern about, you know, putting all of the traffic onto there, but I think when we talked about the other issues related on 40th and Pioneer's, I think they understood. They were, you know, had a lot of questions about, are these going to be owner-occupied? Are they going to be as rentals? With this bigger envelope that the owners told them was that they would build them to be sold. And we, of course, discussed the fact that you can never prohibit an owner from renting his own house, but that's how they're going to build them as to-be-sold units.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
I think that was the majority of it. It was a, it was a pretty good meeting, I think. They ended up getting a lot into the type of house and things like that.
Sure.
That they were questioned about, yeah.
Right.
Any other questions for Mike?
Mike, what kind of, I know this is probably kind of asking you to guess, but what kind of price point are you looking to sell these at?
You know, I think that, I don't know that they know. My instincts would tell me that they would be easily in that $150,000 to $200,000 range. I think the 35-foot-wide ones could be over that. It depends. Their marketing has told them that they want to kind of target the 55-plus market, and so these may just be slab-on-grade, too, no basements, kind of a zero-entry-type thing. It's just a ranch. So in that case, that price point might come back down without a basement, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Do we have any other testimony in support of this application? All right? Any testimony in opposition to the application? Questions for Kristi? Oops, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
You may. You have to come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Ray McReynolds, 4215 South 40th. I'm the neighbor to the north. We didn't get to the meeting because we were out of town. Is the alley going to stay there?
Mike, do you know?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting, so I just...
Which alley are you referring to?
To the south of my house.
This, this one?
Yes.
I don't think that's an alley today.
I don't know. I was told it was an alley.
Oh, I think that's just the gravel rock road for the, they came in.
So they did away with the alley years ago?
They must have vacated it, because it doesn't, it doesn't show as an alley on the plat.
Okay. So we're going to have 10 feet before the next house, correct? Because we're on 40th.
Correct.
Okay, so that's past the fence, correct?
Yes.
That's currently there. Will that fence come down?
I don't know that.
What if we take it down?
Do you want the fence down?
Yes.
As if it's on your property, you can do what you want with it.
It's on probably your prop, the developer's property.
Okay. You know what, maybe what we could do?
Because we have a dog, and we want the fence there, and we don't want the fence running, or the dog running out.
Okay. Sure, if you have more specific questions, you might want to talk to the applicant outside of the meeting. I'm sure he's really good about answering your question.
I'm not protesting what they're doing. I just...
I, that's great, but Mike is great to talk to. If you want to just step out in the hall with him, I bet he'd answer all your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other testimony in opposition? All right. Do we have questions for staff?
I have just a couple.
Okay.
Kristi, can you just clarify it for us? Because these are tricky lots with the design standards, the process for if we approve the change of zone. You mentioned Ed. Can you just talk about the review process or how that works with the design standards? Who sees it and everything?
I can tell you Ed reviews them, but they're reviewed during the building permit stage, and it is a building permit, building and safety department process for review. Usually, they get the building permit in, and it's identified as being in the neighborhood design standards. They route it to Ed. Ed reviews them, and then it goes from there.
Okay, great. And then you mentioned the setback differences between R2 and 3. Can you talk about height differences in buildings?
It's the same.
Okay. Thanks.
Kristi?
Maya?
In, on the site plan on Lot 1, it says existing fence to be removed. Is that, is that the fence that was referred to previously?
Again, the site plan is not tied to the change of zone at all, so the planning department hasn't, isn't approving the site plan. The details of the site plan, I think it was provided in order to provide this body a concept of what they were going to do with the change of zone. But unlike last time we met two weeks ago and we had a change of zone at 40th and Pioneer's, 48th and Pioneer's, that was, that one was tied to a zoning agreement, which had a specific site plan. This one does not, so.
That's what we don't know.
We don't know. There's not anything specific in here that would link to that.
If that fence is on the west side.
Okay, so it's not that one.
If that fence is on the west side.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Kristi?
Kristi, I'm going to go back to this lot size. So minimum lot size in R3 width-wise is what?
In the R2 and the R3, the average lot width is the exact same. It's the exact same lot area in the R2 and the R3, which means if you have a single-family residential house on its own lot, in both R2 and R3, you have to have 6,000 square feet. Your average lot width for a single-family house has to be 50 feet wide. When you do attached single-family, or what generally people refer to as townhouses, those When you do attached single-family, or what generally people refer to as townhouses, those have to be at least 5,000 square foot wide lots in both R2 and R3, and they have to be a minimum of 40 feet wide.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And Mike, did you have anything additional?
No, I was just going to say that I'm glad they're here today, because just we didn't get to meet them. We worked with the other folks on the west side, and they have knowledge that fence is off of their property, it's on our property. And worked with them, too, that night on, there's a couple trees that are right on the property line, that they don't want to have an argument with the buyer of that house years down the road. And so the developers have agreed to work with them on removing those, so we can surely work with them on whether the fence stays or not, or gets redone, at least during the construction and while they own it. So I'd be happy to work with them.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll start. This is in the middle of an older neighborhood on a lot that has been vacant for a long time, and it is adjacent to two arterials. So it's a tricky lot, which is, I think, one reason that we haven't seen a lot of action on this corner. I think this is a creative approach to this, considering the restrictions that we're going to run into with traffic patterns. The only concern I have kind of echoes Tracy's, which is obviously what we don't want are a bunch of buildings with big block walls facing 40th. But it sounds like efforts from the developer and the design standards will help make sure that that doesn't happen. So I intend to support this.
Anyone else?
All right.
Oh, sorry. I am going to support this. I do, you know, I appreciate the city wanting to maintain this as residential. I think that that is pretty important. I mean, really, the difference here is just seven feet of building area. And I do appreciate meeting with the neighbors.
All right. I am going to support the change of zone, because as has been stated, the change of zone is appropriate here to, because all it really does is add to the potential buildable area, which will make it actually a nicer development for the neighborhood. So I'm going to support this application. All right, let's call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
40th?
Yes.
Ticha?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
That motion for approval carries eight to zero, and this is a recommendation to the City Council.
All right, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing no one, we are adjourned.